Consul Luttrell, all in favor? Thank you. I now need a motion to commence our public hearing. Consul Russell. All in favor?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. We will turn the time. First of all, I want to welcome the gallery. It's really nice to see all of you here and to be able to get those items of discussion and to have our delegations. We have to deal with West Area Structure Plan Amendment and with a land use bylaw related to cannabis. And Jeff will give us a preamble.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So this is a public hearing for, we'll start with bylaw 1559, which is a proposed change to the area structure plan. Just for the information of those in attendance who would watch later, an area structure plan is an overlay that guides the development of an area. It's intended to make sure that roadways, utility right-of-ways, and other important things aren't impeded by random development. It lays out the vision of the area, of both the residents, the landowners there, and of the council. Changes require a public hearing to allow for residents to express support or criticism of the changes prior to council ruling on the matter. On the wall, and also for council's sake, and I think the delegation all has a little package with the maps as well, I'll go, I won't go anywhere, Sean. This is what it currently looks like in the West Area Structure Plan. Now, this bylaw amendment is to take care of two things, and I need to illustrate one because council hasn't been totally briefed on this. In this corner here, this has, over the last, a number of years ago was changed, there was a subdivision change that didn't have a corresponding bylaw change with it. So our intent in this bylaw change is to also tidy this up. Some councils may remember that the town purchased some land in that area for a future stormwater management pond, and the subdivision didn't play out just like this to accommodate some other development. What it looks like now, I'll go back here, is this. So it was subdivided thusly. Where that number three is, is actually subdivided, that's Ken Doyg's house, and so the town owns this paid spot here. But the bulk of the matter tonight for the public hearing is concerning this area here, in the northwest corner. The previous subdivision looked like this. In the West Area Structure Plan, currently, it is proposed as two cul-de-sacs with much smaller lots surrounding those cul-de-sacs. At the request of the landowner in that northwest corner, it is proposed that they are larger lots and that they have two through roads, one being Third Avenue continuing all the way through to 12th Street, the other introducing Second A Avenue, not as a cul-de-sac, but continuing through to 12th Street as well. So that is the gist of what's changing in the area structure plan. The bylaw you have in front of you, council, and in the package for the delegates outlines simply just texturally what's changing, so it's putting into words what's proposed to change, and suggesting what schedules in the structure plan will change. So we are not debating the entirety of the structure plan. We're simply debating the mapping and the layout of this area of the structure plan, which is the topic tonight. That's everything administratively that I have prior to any delegations. Before I sit down, is there any questions of administration from council before you hear your delegations? Okay, thank you.
All right. So, thank you, Jeff. We will now ask Mr. Ryan Deep to come to the podium and to help us understand what the outlook perspective is regarding those changes.
Okay, thank you. Everyone's received my memo from the other day? Okay. Great. Oh, sorry. Give me something. No? So in response to the applicant's application to amend the ASP, I had a couple suggestions. And there was some discussion respecting this matter with staff and myself, involving the developer prior to the application or the early stages of the application. And we looked at a few different options conceptually that could be a little different than this.
You got a laser on there if you want to reference that map.
So my concern with allowing both, is it bottom there?
Yeah, it should be. I was just using it there.
Here we go. With allowing both these roads to go through has the potential to sort of change the function of 12th Street West, which now, in my understanding, my view, sort of functions as a collector-type Allowing these two access points, unsignaled access points, will sort of change, has the potential to change the roadway. So my submission to council is that I could see one access point being acceptable, but two access points, third and Two A, I think especially with the spacing distance, is not very much here. If this road is truly to be a collector-type road, a general sort of principle in transportation planning is you want to limit, you know, the number of unabated access points and try and manage the intersection spacing. So my view is that you should consider only allowing a single access point. And I think you have this, but this is the last page from the memo, gives you an idea as to how this could look. It would require a different design, of course, a cul-de-sac, for instance. What I'm also suggesting is sort of a compromise with respect to density. In the existing plan, are we able to go to the existing plan?
Just use your up or down arrow. You should get there.
I'm going to point in here.
There you go.
In the current plan, so that's 24 lots, and the acreages are, I think we're in about the quarter acre kind of lot size range. So the proposal is to halve the number of lots, from 24 down to 12. What I'm suggesting is that we consider adding an additional four lots as a sort of a compromise with respect to the net decrease in lots. I understand the developers' aspirations for larger lots, and I completely get that. But I think, especially in the context of our municipal development plan, the Subsascan Regional Plan, these documents that call for balanced increases in densities, that we consider sort of a middle ground respecting the number of lots and the density. Now, what this would do is provide some of these more half-acre, larger-sized lots, but then also provide a number of the smaller-sized lots in the quarter acre to .3 acre lot size range. So those are the two matters that I've suggested in the memo here and just outlined for you. I think that's really all there is to my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. Do you have questions? Or, Consul, basically?
Ryan, with the access out of 12th, do we exit onto Third Avenue? Are we joined to Third Avenue?
Currently?
Yes. Well, in this plan, are we going to be joined onto Third Avenue?
Eventually.
Then we're going to set up a road race?
Well, Third Avenue would be, yeah, that was, one of my colleagues who originally did the plan back in 2007 did mention that that, at that time, when she was doing this 10 years ago, that was a concern of landlords, that if Third Avenue was to go through, it becomes a long, sort of, you know, potential high-speed sort of strip.
We're not there yet.
I know we discussed it as previous council of that connection and the safety involved in the residential area.
And I think traffic control could probably mitigate that. But yeah, that was a concern and probably remains a concern.
Consul?
A couple of things. In something like this, has there ever been any consideration to low-level speed bumps? Like, you're going into areas in the cities, you're getting speed bumps which help to control the traffic in there, which allows for more of this type of thing. The other thing, with 12th Street there, it's going to become a collector street. The road base is going to have to be changed on that road because it's not going to be to proper codes. Everything is going to have to be upgraded on, at least partway down that to take in this subdivision, which is not a bad thing, but there is a cost involved into upgrading that road base to be able to allow for this type of collection. And I guess the third thing is, it's close to the highway. Department of Highways also has their, or Transportation Department has their regulations as opposed to exits onto main roads, because that kind of connects the provincial highway, doesn't it? That becomes part of that 501 highway. And I know it's not easy to, it's not easy to get permission to have accesses too close together on that. So those are the kind of concerns that I see here.
I think with respect to those first two matters, if I may, they're both, those are good points, but they're more operational matters. For example, the speed bumps, the speed, those are things that you could do in response to the land use decision that you make, but we wouldn't typically get into that detail in the area structure plan.
Okay. Okay.
Just two things. The 12th Street is not a provincial highway. We tried to give it to them, they wouldn't take it. So it's a town road. Also, Third Avenue is not there between Ninth Street and 10th Street. Is that town property or is that owned by citizens in that area? Lloyd Clark's, for example?
No.
I think that's on Mike's land.
Third Street, Lloyd Clark's land is Lloyd Clark's land.
Is Lloyd's Clark's land.
There is an easement there for access and for utilities, but he owns the land as of right now.
So we'd have to deal with him if we wanted to move it up there?
If we wanted to, we either have to negotiate and buy it or do something with it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Nolan, you want to add something?
I did send this application to Alberta Transportation, and they said since 12th Street is an in-town street, it's up to the town to determine how many accesses they have, and they have no, nothing against us allowing more accesses onto 12th Street.
All right. Thank you so much for that update. Thank you. Now we will ask Dr. Glenn Jones to come and to present to council.
Well, I think this is an honor to be able to speak to this esteemed group. Some of you I've sat across the table from in times past and enjoyed it very much. And first of all, I'd like to say that all of you people are my friends, and I enjoy working with you. Because I disagree with you, doesn't mean I'm not your friend. But I, you know, sometimes disagreements can be quite sharp, and if you can't have disagreements and still be friends, and I suppose you weren't friends to start with. So with that in mind, this is how I am approaching all this. And in my little dissertations, forgive my typographical errors and a little bit of organization, but historically, what we have been calling the West Bypass for a long time, appeared on the scene in the mid to late 70s along with the East Bypass. And the West Bypass was built, some of the property had to be expropriated to get it. It was very difficult to obtain, and eventually we got it, we got the money, and Ninth Avenue appeared, the bridge there, that's all part of it, same as the First Avenue Bridge and the East Bypass. In, well, when Fritz Patton was our mayor, we were approached by the county for support to form the Bezer Road into provincial highway, Highway 501 West it became. And originally, when the county made the application, 12th Street was part of that application. The town reviewed it and said, "Well, Ninth Avenue is a lot more expensive to maintain. Province, you take that." We'd like you to take both, but at that time, and we weren't smart enough to push it at the time, they accepted Ninth Avenue with the bridge and everything else. They keep wanting to give it back, but don't ever let them. You don't have to. So 12th Street was really never part of 501. It was part of the original application, but it never became part of 501. And it was with provincial grants that these two roads were built, and then the province took over the East Bypass, which was a good deal for the town. A few years ago, I kind of noted this in my little paper, is that we approached the province, the premier, our MLA, our Minister of Highways, they had them right here, and they went up and looked at, you know, would you take that as part of Highway 501 so you can maintain it and maintain it as a through street? And the premier, the Minister of Highways, or MLA, and another individual was there at that moment, they thought that was a pretty good idea. But the bureaucrats at the time were very much, they wanted to give the whole thing back to the county. And so they dragged their feet and the whole thing died on the order paper. I would really hate to see us go back to the way things were, to go on 12th Street to what Seventh Street is now. Originally, Seventh Street was the only way other than Main Street of getting from north to south and south to north in our town. And there was limited access, and it worked well, except there was no Ninth Avenue, it just went off the Bezer Road, you had to come up Third Avenue to get access to it. But all this was some councils that had foresight and the opportunity and determination to make our community look like it would, what it should be. Now, I have respect for developers. Mike, I think what you're doing, trying to do is great, but preserve that road as a road and a way to get through our town. It lines up with Highway 501. You say, "Well, when we get it all, it becomes like a Seventh Street, we'll simply go further west." Well, further west is a cemetery road. Come on, people, look at the terrain. Look at the problems of getting access and ownership of that property. I've talked to a number of people around town, only one of them showed up tonight, and I thank you for coming, he owns a business up close to that West Bypass. And I got two responses, and they are, we always, each one of them said, "Well, what are they doing having that at 50 kilometers an hour? That's silly. That shouldn't be 50 kilometers an hour. This connects with Highway 501. It's the only one that does." And the responses I got when they said that we're going to make that into simply a collector road and this or a thing, number was, "What are they thinking about?" The other one, which isn't so polite, is, "I think that's stupid." I'm not saying that, I'm simply saying, "Council, here's your opportunity to maintain some foresight. Are you going to determine what our town looks like 10, 20, 30 years from now, or are you going to leave it up to the developers, which are good people, well-intentioned, but they've got to make a dollar on what they're doing? And I don't want them to do that. That's the name of the game. But please preserve this road. Now, the whole thing won't end tonight regardless of what your decision is tonight, because if you try, if you go ahead and say, make this, try to make this into a collector road, instead of keeping it as a through road, then I'll go work. I've talked a lot to quite a few people already, and I'll talk to some more. So please, listen to what I'm saying and listen to what the people in our community really think about our community. And try and keep this as it should be. Thank you very much, council. Do your best to do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, for that passionate speech. We will now ask Mr. Mary Schaefer to come and do his presentation. Thank you, Mike, for coming.
Thanks for letting me come and talk about what I want to do. I purchased this property, it's been about a year now, with the intention of having an acreage for myself and my family and having an area where we can have large lots for people that want them. Now, I don't know which button I push here.
Sean, can you give us a little bit of help with the?
This one right here? Right there? Those five lots, as you probably know, were developed a few years ago as large lot residential lots. They were developed by my dad and my uncle, and every one of them has sold. Now, there's one house on it right now with another one has a development permit out, getting ready to build it. Now, there aren't a lot of areas in town that we can do large lot residential homes. And I have talked with quite a few people around town, and I probably lost the sale of my house, which is listed right now, to one of these people because they asked what I was doing, and I told them, and they wanted a bigger, a big lot. They came from a big lot, they want a big lot, and they bought a cheaper house that they think that they can sell quicker in the future. In saying that, Mr. Nolan Card and I went over the proposal from the Old Man Regional Planning Commission, and their lots that had the cul-de-sacs on it did not meet the size requirements for large lot residential. They were a little bit too small, and the only way I could get it to where I had the half-acre lots was to have a through street of Second A Avenue without having a turnaround. That being said, we came up, we had a different, I had a different drawing that Second A Avenue was too close to Second Ave. So I came up with this, which works out very nice for the lots. All of the lots are almost the same size, about half an acre. The ones on the south side, which is right there, are a little bit smaller, but I have quite a bit of interest in them. And I know there's not a lot of development going on in Carston right now, and I'd like to change that, and I'm trying to come up with certain ways to do that. And this is one of them, because as a builder, I get a lot of feedback from people who want bigger lots. I mean, we can look at the lots at the golf course that were developed, however, maybe years ago. I had talked with, shared with developments about it, and every one of those lots that are there now had a deposit on them at the time. Every one of them had a $5,000 deposit on them at the time. And when they came back out with the size of the lots, people didn't want that size. Now, I know that there is a market for smaller lots for people who do not want yards, but there is a market for people who want, for bigger lots in town. Now, in talking about this 12th Street, it's been, I'm one of those that when it got changed to 50 kilometers an hour, was annoyed. My shop, I don't know if you don't know where my shop is, but I live down closer to the golf course. In my shop, I go up 12th Street, turn left on Second Avenue, and, you know, so I'm driving 12th Street every day. And when it changed to 50 kilometers an hour, I didn't have, you know, I wasn't happy about it. But I thought it was a bypass at the time, and I thought a bypass shouldn't be 50 kilometers an hour. But the bypass to 501 is at the golf course road. From the top of the hill going down is the bypass to 501, not 12th Street. Carston is, doesn't seem like it so much, but we are expanding. I mean, we have some industry that's moving west of 12th Street. And because of that, 12th Street, I believe, should be considered a street and should be able to have extra approaches to it. Sorry, I won't keep showing up. Everything about it, I know that there were some issues, and you probably are aware of it, with the Third Avenue that got put in just down the street from where I wanted to help. Everything about this one will be engineered, will be designed to meet all the requirements and built, the roads, the services, everything to, you know, to the point where the town, when the town takes it over, they won't have anything else to do other than maintain a road. So I would encourage you to look closely at it. I do have a lot of interest in it. I would like to proceed with this proposal. I think it would be well-received with residents in town. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just would like to know from my own perspective, would you be even willing to consider maybe some tweaking on that plan?
I've looked at it in quite a few different ways, and I've sat down with Mr. Nolan Card. I'm not saying he, he didn't give me this, this is what I gave him, but I've told him, he's given me some ideas and things. I don't want a cul-de-sac. I'm not a fan of cul-de-sacs. I look around at cul-de-sacs right now with the families that we have here and the number of kids that drive vehicles now, and they're jam-packed with vehicles. They don't have a lot of frontage on the lots. Yeah, they're pie-shaped and they can be bigger, but I'm not a fan of cul-de-sacs, and I'll do everything I can to not put a cul-de-sac in.
Okay, so here's another question. Your Two A Street, have you ever thought maybe to, so you don't want a cul-de-sac because you don't want a bowl? But have you thought that it could be a dead end?
I talked to my engineer, who's looking at the roads and the services, and he said you would not be able to have a dead end without a turnaround for emergency vehicles.
No.
So, yeah. So like, Two A Avenue will continue up on 11th Street, because 11th Street, well, eventually, I know that's a sore subject around town, but I'm not one that's just, you know, that's the type of person who, you know, throw it and tell you guys want it, you guys do it today. I want to develop it and develop it properly. So we will have to have part of 11th Street also developed there.
Thank you, Mike. So are there questions for Mike? Consul, go.
I appreciate the fact that you're trying to bring economic growth to Carston. Wow, there's a thought, hey? So I appreciate your insight in, that you're excited to bring money to Carston, people to Carston, those are all good things. I did wonder about the straight through. Do you not feel that the, that the direct road isn't going to conflict in any way with the speed and people going through there and kids and?
So you're talking about Third Avenue right now?
I am.
I'm not. You look around, Second Avenue goes all the way through. You know, avenues are made to go all the way through, they're not made to come to a stop and go around and continue on. So I'm not concerned about it. It's no different than going from Main Street all the way up Third Avenue until you hit Lloyd Clark's property, hey? Because you're not going to gain speed from Ninth, or Seventh, Ninth Street to 12th Street.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Consul, so?
Mike, I understand your concern about dead ending on Second A. What if you had a dead end, but whatever emergency services needed to, they could go through if they had the?
I don't know how you would enforce that if there was, if there was a road that went through there for emergency vehicles.
Two big pillars that only emergency services have access to move them if they need to get through. You know what I'm saying?
I mean, it's something that can be looked at. I don't know if they would.
Kind of like what's by your house.
Pardon me?
Kind of like what's by your house right now.
Right. I don't know if they would like that just because of the time it'd take, I guess, if there's an emergency, to get out and move something. I don't know. That'd be something we would have to ask them.
I know, I was going to suggest, on 43rd Avenue in Lethbridge, they've got a large mobile home park there, and they have that exact thing, but the emergency people have keys to the lock. And so they'd be well-aware of the situation, and they'd be well-aware to get in and out of there as quick as they need to. That's a great idea. I think that that would probably solve some of that problem there and still get what you want. And I think when the mayor says, "We're willing to tweak," I think that's a good tweak, you know, because they have a gate there and people don't just go through, right? And it works really good over in Lethbridge.
Well, I don't see a problem with it. There's other A avenues in town that go onto streets. It's no different than what I'm proposing. I think the only problem that we see here is 12th Street right? 12th Street right now is used as a bypass, which it's not a bypass. And so because it's 12th Street, the speed limit's been dropped to 50 kilometers an hour as a town street. It's no different than other places in town that have Second A, Third A, Fourth A, whatever.
Mike, we still hold out faint hope that the province is gonna take that.
Well, I, I just, it seems like the west end of town is an area that like, people like to develop. It seems to develop more than the east end of town. And we're at 12th Street. Where do we go from there? Do we stop now? You know, it's like, because it's a bypass, do we stop and just let some industrial and hope the industrial comes on the west side of it and keep it as a, as a highway? You know, to me, Kerstyn's growing. It's no different than every other street in town that happened when, when it grows.
Counselor Mayberry, you wanted to add something?
Mike, now, correct me. We started out originally with 24 lots, right?
Yeah.
Now we're down to 16?
Twelve.
Or 12?
Yeah.
Oh, so suggesting 16.
Or four more? Or...
Like, their proposal had 24. I don't know about the new one.
It was splitting the middle block.
It was splitting, yeah. Which would, which would give us 16 then.
Yeah.
You would keep the top, the bottom, but you would...
But they weren't, they didn't meet the large lot residential size, though.
Yeah.
That's, that was the...
I need to clarify some stuff from the bylaw. Like, the Westbury structure bylaw was amended once prior by, a prior council, but not properly. So this area on that end was subcutted that way. It was approved by council. This area, Third Street going all the way through, was approved by council. The jogs on 11th Street to the west were all approved by the former councils, but they weren't properly done to amend the bylaw. So when you guys are looking at the map and you're saying, "Oh, Third, he's proposed that Third to go through." Well, that's already been done by a previous council at one time. Said Third could go all the way through. That was when Mayor Bregazi was on council.
That's a long time ago.
So it was a while ago. So I, I do have a map drawn over it all, showing Third there, showing all the jogs on 11th Street, showing the changes to Jensen's properties, but not done properly.
Counselor Mayberry?
Now, Mike, you, you're in favor of large residential lots. So what, how many large residential lots are you putting into this plan?
Twelve.
Twelve? And they, they meet the large lot?
Yeah.
What they don't meet is a mix
That's right.
and a higher density. That's what they don't meet according to the Old Mac River and the Susslechman.
Another thing with the bylaw was, the original plan, this area was zoned large lot residential. But the original plan, none of those lots in that area were big enough to fit or be classified as a large lot. So the original plan had some problems too. And at the time, Diane always said, "Any of the lots that are dotted, the lines that are dotted, are not really set in stone. They're more to be moved around and manipulated by the owners to fit what the plan's supposed to be." So a large lot would say that those lots, as they were all cul-de-sacs, would have never fitted. They would have had to be made larger to fit the actual large lot size.
Mike, I want to ask you another question. If we keep the drawing the way you have it, the houses on the top part and on the bottom part are facing a road, but the middle group is facing a road, but the one on the top are facing the back of the house.
It would, well, it would actually be opposite that.
Okay, so I understand.
Because of the, because of the lay of the land, they would, it would be like a architectural control-type thing. Those houses would face to the north. Because the lay of, the slope of the land slopes off to the back. And that's, that's the best way to have a proper slope for a home, is higher at the front, lower at the back. So those ones would, they would all face the same way. They wouldn't have one that faces one, one that faces opposite. They would all be the same. That would be stipulated in architectural controls.
Makes sense.
I, I do also want to point out, like, as a developer, you know, like Mr. Jones had said, you know, everybody's there to make money. You know, if I, I'm, yeah, I can make some money on it. I'm not gonna lie. That's not my number-one goal. My number-one goal right now for me is to have an acreage for me and my family. And I can't proceed with that till we come to some kind of agreement here. But I could take the other drawing and put in 24 or even 16 lots and make more money. That's not where the market is that I'm trying to hit. And I don't, as soon as I do that, I have a feeling people are gonna look elsewhere because they want the bigger lots.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, for this presentation. We will have to discuss
Yeah.
this, and we will then give you our decision.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. We will carry on with 9D.
Mike, you still have 15 or 1647C in this public hearing.
Oh, yes, that's right, correct. Okay, so Jeff, if you don't mind giving us an update on the land use bylaw cannabis?
Looks from our delegation that there's not as much interest in this one, so...
Which is rather remarkable.
Yeah, which is interesting. However, this is now the public hearing for bylaw 1647C. This bylaw requires changes to upcoming, changes to our land use bylaw in response to upcoming changes in both federal and provincial legislation involving legalization of recreational cannabis and the allowance of cannabis retail businesses. One thing I just wanted to read. "The public may ask, why not simply prohibit all uses in the community? Why not simply prohibit cultivation and retail sale of cannabis altogether? Why accommodate it within your land use bylaw?" I've already been asked that question. So what I wanted to, for the purpose of the public meeting, was to just quote a paragraph from Reynolds Mirth Richardson Farmer Law Firm on the matter. They say, "In Alberta, municipalities cannot prohibit or opt out of cannabis retail within their boundaries without risking a challenge. Municipalities can regulate the location and the standards for retail cannabis use for proper planning reasons and can further regulate retail cannabis operations through business licensing bylaws and cannabis use through nuisance bylaws. But municipalities cannot outright prohibit cannabis retail in their land use bylaw or prohibit cannabis use in their municipalities. An absolute prohibition would likely be met with a successful court challenge based on the argument there is no evidence to support the view that cannabis retail will have such a deterior, they call it a deleterious impact on the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties to warrant total prohibition no matter where located. An outright man would likely lead a court to conclude the municipality is seeking to prohibit the activity because of the moral undertones and not because of legitimate land use considerations." So the answer to the question is, why don't you simply prohibit it? It's because it will simply open up for us more headache than we will currently have, if we have any at all, frankly. So that's the, the legal piece. I do want to point out, and Mr. Ryan Dick will talk about this too, there were some small amendments since you did first reading. The most significant of which is, you'll recall in the previous map, the hospital had 100-meter buffer zone and everything else at 300. At the recommendation of Old Man River, everything is at 300, simply for simplicity in applying the bylaw. And so that's been changed. And I think there was a couple of textual changes in the schedule. There was a couple of small grammatical changes that we just fixed as we got going through it of no consequence to the bylaw. And a definition, or in the general, there was a definition that was, that was changed. So we did make a few changes since first reading. Those are outlined in the package you have. They're all in red. Prior to having any delegations, are there any questions of administration on the matter? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, but I can tell you the media are rather interested in what's happening here. Ryan, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, don't have too much to add here. I guess if I can, I can certainly give some, some context as to what other communities in the region are doing. And as you maybe know, as I've, as I've mentioned before, the approach you're taking with direct control is, is more on the restrictive end, which is fine. A place like, for example, Picture Buick is doing the same thing. I was in Knollford on Monday night, and unlike here, they had about 75 people there quite concerned about the thing. Yeah. But they're using a different approach, not direct control. They're listing the use in the district, cannabis retail sales. So there's, there's a, there's a spectrum of different approaches. And maybe you've even heard the town of Coldale is pursuing exactly what Jeff described, that a community shouldn't do, being sort of an outright prohibition. So they passed first reading on that just last week as well. So really, until, until this matter gets in the courts and we get some, we get some legal decisions on the thing, we're not gonna really know where we stand, what's reasonable, what's unreasonable for, say, setback, separation distances like we have here. So we're a little blind at this time, but as you know, we can reopen this matter at any time if we amend the land use bylaw, should there be a precedent-setting court case or something like that. So Jeff mentioned a few of the, of the suggested changes, and I think those are all in the memo, another of which being to set an enactment date for the bylaw to October 17th, which corresponds with the federal date of the planned legalization. The one other thing that I picked up on that I did not, that I missed originally was to, what we have right now is hours of operation for a retail store from 9 till 9. What it actually says in the order and council regulation is that the opening time will be 10:00 AM, same as liquor stores. So what I'm suggesting council do is just change that 9:00 AM till, to 10:00 AM so to align with the provincial standard. Because they, they won't be able to open at 9:00 AM anyway. So if we have it at 9:00 AM, we'll just look silly. That was my, my sort of original mistake there. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to mention.
All right. Counselor, Counsel, do you have questions for Ryan? Well, Ryan, I think we have tried our best to put a legislation that is covering our needs, and then we shall see what the future brings as we all line to that. Thank you so much. Counselors, we have our next delegation that will come at 7:00. So we are going to try to complete item 9. We were...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You require a motion to return to regular...
Absolutely right, I thought about that one. Counselor Court?
I'll make a motion to return to regular council business and move out of the public hearing area.
Thank you so much. Are you favor? Thank you. Sometimes I do need a reminder. All right, so let's go back where we start. We did 9A, we do not have 9B. And 9C is for your information. 9D, is there anything that you want to talk about prior to our AUMA planning session? No? Well, that's good. If you don't have any question there?
I have just one question.
Go ahead.
Has there been any other attempts in the last several years to extend 11th Streets? Or I know we ran it as property issues when I was on council before. Is there any, any desire, any efforts to try and move from Second Avenue to build 11th Street?
To tie it in from Second?
We, we tried when
Yes.
Westerns owned it, and we, but we haven't tried since Don Weston's son purchased it from the company.
There is a for-sale sign sitting on it right now.
There is a for-sale sign, and he, I did talk to him. He doesn't want to give it up. He would want the value of the lot, or is kind of what he said. But we haven't ever gone officially
Negotiated, yeah.
or negotiated or anything to say he's gonna do it. I've heard rumors that it's gonna be sold to somebody else who might put 11th Street through.
Okay.
But that's just rumors so far.
Okay.
All right. So you have some correspondence. There's Alberta Recreation Park Association is an invite. Jeff, do we normally send any one of staff to that seminar? I know that we send our staff to one of them, but I don't know if that's one.
They go to the Rec, oh, yeah, no, our, anyway, Recreation Facility Personnel Conference. They haven't gone to Alberta Recreation Parks.
All right, so there is no special requirement for us to send anyone there?
No.
Thank you. So what I need to know, Counselor, is do you need to have a quick break before we have our next?
Before we move on, I'd like to ask a question about this recreation.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Why, why is it that we don't have an appetite to send a counselor to this meeting? I'd like to see a little more reporting going on in the recreation field. I, I, we have, this comes up every year, year after year after year, and, and, and I understand our recreation director goes occasionally, but I just, I've never seen a lot of what's going on. I, I think it's important, the money, the kind of money that we spend every year on recreation, I think it'd behooves us to send at least our recreation counselor there to, to, you know, to look into it is, because there's new ideas coming forward all the time, and I'd like to know what they are. That's my feeling. I, I don't know, how do you feel about that, Counselor Brown? I mean, you're the recreation person.
I am. I read up on this conference, and I didn't feel it was worth my time going. There is another one that's coming up that I felt maybe down the road, but it wasn't this one.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay, well, you go.
As Counselor Barnes and I have discussed, whenever we send somebody to these meetings and whatever they are, we need as a, as a council to receive a report. And it seems like when our administration, our administration staff goes to something like this, such as our recreation department, we never receive a report of the things that are changing or what he found interesting or what he could use in our community.
Okay.
So we need to have reports.
All right, so here's an interesting point you're bringing up. Jeff, is there a place for staff who is assigned to a committee to do a report to the committee if they go to a seminar? I think that is as simple as that. It should be the committee that receives that report, right?
Well, what I can tell you is on Parson Rec or on FCSS, one of the boards that I sit on, when we go to a conference or whatever, we do return and report to
Right, to the committee.
And then it's in our minutes, which is then sent to council.
Which is the way...
Essentially, right? So you are finding out about what happened. I don't know as far as employees go, that, that's different.
That is normally the proper way it's done. All right, so do you need a five-minute, a five-minute recess? Okay, so I need a motion for a recess.
I lose the reset for five minutes.
All right, so you have five minutes. Go forward, Counselor. All in favor? There, five minutes, and we will entertain our next delegation.